Good evening and welcome to the August 20th, Village of Monroe, 4th meeting of the Girls' Campaign.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you in attending tonight's meeting and welcome. Just a note, exit to your rear and to this side right here. First order of business is the department reports. I need to have a motion to accept the department reports as submitted.
I'll make a motion that we accept the department reports.
I'll second.
Any questions on them?
No.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business, budget transfers and modifications from the treasurer. Has the board had an opportunity to look through them?
Mm-hmm.
Straight forward. Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Next order of business, resignation, part-time code enforcement officer Trudy Antonacci, trustee who?
Yes, in a memo from Chief Mel Kiori, he writes that we accept the resignation of parking enforcement officer Trudy Antonacci. She submits her resignation as the result of some medical issues that she's having. Her resignation date will be effective August 4th. I put that in the form of a motion and I send her the very best on her road to recovery.
I'll second.
Okay. Aye as well, wish her the best on her medical issues. Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. All business, first item, request for licensing agreement for 31 Dorothy Drive. We had council prepare a license agreement. We do.
Yep.
And I believe everything, have you had a chance to look through it? Straight forward?
Yep.
Okay, I believe building is good with it? Absolutely. Okay. At the August 6th meeting, just for historical perspective, at the August 6th meeting, property owner Claudio Alzepidi, thank you sir. Got it, Paul Gray?
Got it, Gray.
Thank you. Of 31 Dorothy Drive submitted a request for licensing agreement which would allow him to install a fence within the village-owned drainage easement. Mr. Albedizzi Alzepidi stated that the fence could, would close in the back portion of the property, allow him to close in a pool that he's having installed. He is aware that the fence would be removed at his expense should the village need to access that area for any reason. After discussion with the board, we requested our council to draw up a license agreement to be reviewed at the next board meeting, which we have done. So I need a motion to allow the license agreement between Mr. Alzepidi and the Village of Monroe as written by our council.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second. Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you sir.
And the building inspector has seen a copy of the license agreement?
Actually, I don't know.
Oh.
It's standard.
Figured it was standard.
Yeah, I have a copy here if you want.
Yeah, we should, yep. So Ms. Alzepidi, when you go through the process of applying for a fence permit with the building department, that'll be your next step?
Okay.
Alright, so you'll move in with the building department at that point and we'll make sure that he has what he needs from us. So you're totally on board.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so when we have the agreement at any time in your convenience, between eight to four, we'll have the agreement here. I'll sign it as a requirement and I'll need you to do the same. And just come to the window with the clerk, she'll have you sign it.
You want tomorrow or?
Anytime you want, it's ready. Alright, okay.
I have his wife's name on it as well because she's co-owner.
Okay, so we have, we have your wife's name listed as well?
Uh, we can list it, yeah. I didn't put it on the letter, but yeah, I put my wife's name, Patricia.
Yes, I have her on this. She's co-owner.
Yes.
So, yeah, she would need her signature as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Okay, continuation of the website development agreement between Impact Social Networking LLC and the Village of Monroe. Has the board had an opportunity to review the proposal from the vendor?
I've had an opportunity to have a conversation with the vendor, yes.
Have you read the agreement?
In its entirety, no.
You?
Aye as well. So, I've discussed my concerns, obviously, and the concerns of my departments, but I need to look at the full contract.
I would just note, Mr. Mayor, that I did look at the contract. It's pretty standard. The, I mean, the terms are not outside the scope of, you know, contractual language. I don't necessarily have a problem with them except for paragraph 16, which makes this subject to the laws of the state of New Jersey, but it must be the state of New York. So, that would be a change. Also, the date, in paragraph two, the term starts the 6th of August. It should really be updated to whatever date it states up at the top, which also says the 6th. So it really needs, all you really need to do is if you decide to sign this, just cross those dates out and put the date of signature if you want to go forward with this.
Right.
What about paragraph 16, though?
16, we can, again, you could cross it out and say New York, or you could ask the vendor to modify it to say New York.
When did we receive this proposal from this gentleman?
I believe it was sent the day of our last board meeting.
August 6th, I have-
Was it submitted to everybody?
It was printed out and distributed right prior to the meeting because it came in at 5:30.
Prior to what meeting?
The last meeting.
The 6th.
Okay, alright. I'm going to implore everybody to make sure they read it in its entirety.
Mm-hmm.
And get it done. The gentleman is here.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I wanted this done tonight.
Well, can we ask him about that paragraph 16?
Well, I'm sure you can. Sir, could you come on up, please? Would you please state your name for the record?
Kurt Steinberg.
Kurt, my board has a couple of questions for you they'd like to ask.
Sure.
Okay. Trustee who?
So, under paragraph 16, it notes that this will be governed by the laws of the state of New Jersey, which is where your offices are located.
Yeah.
Would that be, would you be amenable to having this changed to being governed by the state of New York?
That's fine.
Can you make that modification, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And when is it that you wanted to start working with us? Upon what date?
I'm ready to start tonight, you know, or tomorrow, if you're ready to execute the contract. What would happen is, you know, we'd execute this, you do the 50% down payment, and then I will have designs over in four to five days roughly for approval, mockups.
Would it also be a true statement that dependent upon the deposit, the final payment would be allocated to you upon acceptance of the site?
Exactly, yes.
Trustee who, do you have anything else?
I don't have any other questions, no.
Do you have any questions?
Sure.
I have to read through it, yeah.
Alright, so unfortunately, my board has not read the doc, the contract.
Okay.
Alright, so we're now prepared to move forward with it. I apologize. And what I'll do is, I'll ask you to modify the New Jersey stipulation there, line 16. And I'll also ask you to just update the date. And council, will this require a resolution at the next board meeting?
If you're prepared to accept it at that point, and what I would ask, Kurt, is I will, I'm the village council, I will email out to you so that you have my email address. And then I have to read the contract. That was one concern. I didn't have any other concerns, but if the board gets concerns to me, I will pass them on to you and then you and I can work together to modify the final document.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions and resolve if there's any, you know, confusion or issues.
And I also looked at the maintenance agreement, and again, when I spoke briefly about that. And I think that's, you know, it's not an untypical maintenance agreement for this type of design work, but again, it's up to the board. Do you have any substantive-
Well, as I said to, I said to you earlier, that we would take, or we would be prepared to take action on the contract, but that the board had not had an opportunity to go through the maintenance agreement.
Okay.
Right, we did say that.
Yeah, there's separate agreements, so that's fine.
And then the second piece of that was that maybe you wanted to look at it, you had mentioned two to three hours per month. And we asked that maybe we be more defined that way as well. I think you were amenable to that, if I remember correctly, or at least come up with a, with an alternate idea.
Yeah, I think it had said contemplating and we wanted to say, you know, it's affirmed two to three hours. The way I wrote the agreement, there's some flexibility there, so we're updating plugins, we're also answering questions, we're updating content. So there's, I left it a little bit flexible to be able to do, you know, a bit of customer service, a bit of, you know, plugin and maintenance and changes as needed.
Okay.
The only, the only obvious comment I have there is in section two, and again, you know, the agreement, and then it's a day, and then it's 12, and then it ends 12 months later, the next year, but it says for a period of six months. I think that's just a typo.
Okay, possibly.
Alright, well, I think council, you'll make your comments. A comprehensive list, we'll get them to you. Anything that you need to change, you'll do so, and my board will have any comments or concerns prepared and drafted to council, and then I guess we'll just have one point of contact sent to you.
Okay, sounds good. So the timing on this, do you guys think you'll be able to read through in the next few days, or?
I, I, it's not terribly lengthy, so I'm, oh, excuse me, I'm sure I could read through it fairly quickly. So I would say yes, it won't take long.
Great, okay, wonderful. Does anyone have any other questions for me while I'm here?
Not at this moment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you sir, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Thank you. Alright, so we'll table that at this time. New business, New York State Governor Traffic Safety Committee award, trustee who?
Yes, in a memo from Chief Mel Kiori, he writes to us, notifying us that the Monroe Police Department has been awarded $1,020 by the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee to participate in the statewide child passenger safety program. The grant period will run from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020. And the goal of this program is to increase the proper use and installation of child safety seats in New York State. I find this to be a very important thing for us to be involved in, as there's been a lot of debate over the best place and the best position of a child in the car, and I'm proud that the Monroe Police Department is able to participate in this. So I put this in the form of a motion.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, next order of business is the water account number 72. There's been a request by the property owner by form of a letter requesting the board trustees consider a credit be issued to his water account due to a water meter break resulting in a water department issuance of a estimated 2019 February water bill. He believes the bill, which was at the time estimated at 979.50, he believes it should have been closer to 400 to 500. According to the water department, that estimated read was calculated using the last four good actual reads before the meter began to fail and were based on bills taken from 8/117 through 5/118's billing cycles, which the water department states is the most accurate way of determining a customer's water consumption. Has the board read through the memo and letter from the gentleman?
I have.
Do you have any concerns or comments that we can discuss?
We do not, but our water liaison is not here. My brother, I'd like to hear her opinion on it.
So you'd like to table it?
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure that those four quarters, that's the most accurate way to establish what the actually, actual credit should be.
Do we know exactly when that toilet was fixed in relation to when that meter was replaced? The homeowner notes that there was a leak, they found it, and they replaced it. And now it seems to me that this fixed leak coincides with the installation of the new meter. We don't, do, do we know that, I mean?
Alright, so-
And I agree that I think that we should have the input of the water liaison.
Okay, so we'll table that until the next meeting, when the water liaison has had an opportunity to follow through with the water department. Road dedication for Woodrow Estates.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I did interact with the village engineer. I asked him to check the meets and bounds and let me know whether he has inspected and accepted these roads for dedication as well as some easements. He indicated that he had and that it was fine with him. I prepared a standard resolution to the, offer the, accept the offer of dedication of Reynolds Road, Callaway Drive, Glen Eagles Court, and the Reynolds Road widening and realignment as well as a 50-foot easement for drainage as well as a snow easement. You have those, you have the resolution itself. I have the attachment A, which is the deed and easements as well as the maps, the meets and bounds. My understanding is this is Woodrow Estates, this is phase two. So it, again, the village does not have to accept road dedications. It's completely up to the board. But I did prepare the appropriate resolution for acceptance.
I have a question about Reynolds Road. There was a section of Reynolds Road that needed repair less than a year ago. Do you recall that? There was a, Reynolds Road was shut down and a portion of the road sunk, and it needed to be rebuilt. And in a conversation that I had with the supervisor, the highway supervisor, he stated that the way that, the manner in which the road was, was built in that section was faulty. So, I'm a little concerned with taking possession of that portion of the road, even though we fixed that without knowing that that road was built in a manner that we now want to take responsibility for.
The area you're referring to is after the diversion?
Mm-hmm. I, I believe that's, I believe that's where the repair was made. I'd like to have a conversation with the, with the highway supervisor to talk about that repair that we made.
Table that.
Okay.
I might also suggest that if there are questions about it, you might want to speak with the village engineer as well, because I do have emails from him saying that, you know, the road was inspected, so there's, there could be a disconnect somewhere between what I think you're, you know, being offered and what you're actually being offered.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the village engineer can probably clear that up.
Okay.
Next order of business, request to travel, New York State Commercial Vehicle Safety Training, Kyle Mahoney, trustee who?
Yes, in a memo from Chief Mel Kiori, he writes asking that the board approves Officer Kyle Mahoney to attend the New York State Commercial Vehicle Safety Level One certification to be held at the New York State Police Academy in Albany. This training takes place in two parts. Part A is scheduled for September 16th through September 20th. Part B is scheduled for October 7th through October 11th, both of which are Monday through Friday. There is no cost for the training, however, hotel accommodations for each night are $113. To my understanding, Officer Mahoney will be working a steady shift during those days and there will be no overtime incurred with this at all. The chief is requesting 10 nights in the hotel to reflect Sunday evening through Thursday evening. I put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Do we need to send him Sunday night? What would be the ramifications if we sent him Monday morning as opposed to Sunday night?
It's an overtime, overtime break in the morning, but then there's networking, and then he'll be on time for school at 8 o'clock.
So the thought is that having him there Sunday night prior would be beneficial to him for networking purposes and arriving in a timely manner?
Yes.
What are our thoughts?
Yeah, I'm on board.
Yeah? Okay. I put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Next order of business, Orange Rolls de Boscys was a group that we had reached out to and asked for them to do an assessment. They have a records management services team, and we actually brought them in. The clerk took them around through the village here, and the purpose is to manage paper. So I'll read a memo from Clerk Baxter to the board of trustees. Village Clerk Baxter has requested approval to move forward with a price quote provided by Orange Rolls de Boscys and their shared services, records management services department to assist with the village in purging all inactive and obsolete files as well as analyzing and organizing all remaining files in Village's hall attic and clerk's office and basement. We should, I guess, right? This is a much-needed step as the village continues to move forward in reducing the volume of paper in Village Hall. The price quote includes two record management specialists to travel to Village Hall over the course of five days for eight hours per day and work exclusively in the attic clerk's office and basement storage room. The total cost for their service is $3,400 and has been budgeted from A1620.4100, which is Village Hall general expense. I need a motion to move forward on this?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Aye, I will second.
Any discussion?
No.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Next order of business, a request to travel to the Orange County Federation Planning and Zoning Support Staff Class for Elizabeth Doherty, who is the secretary in the ZBA. Resolved, the board of trustees approved the attendance of ZBA Secretary Elizabeth Doherty at the Planning and Zoning Support Staff Workshop presented by the Orange County Municipal Planning Federation on Friday, September 13th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Honeysteet Racing Museum in Goshen, New York. The cost of attendance is $35, which includes breakfast and will be allocated from line 8, 8010.4720, education zoning. I need a motion to accept-
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I will second.
Any further discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, um- I have the actual memo I can work from. Yeah. Alright, well, first described, there was a letter received from the planning board chair asking for the, the ability to move forward with appointing an alternate engineering firm as our in-house firm, Langton Tully, has a conflict of interest. And they have vetted different candidates and have come up with the following firm, H2M Architects and Engineers. Mr. Dennis Lindsay, who's a PE, he is requesting the approval of the board to allow this firm to represent the Village of Monroe during this application for the planning board's process. I'd like to ask for a motion that we allow this to move forward.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further question? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay. How about trustee who?
So we had a, a very busy week this, this past week, and we, New York City lost one of their bravest, and he was a resident of the Village of Monroe. And so his wake was held, his wake and his funeral were held right up here in Monroe, New York, at Sacred Heart. And I wanted to take a moment to extend my gratitude to the Monroe Police Department for making sure that the traffic that was incurred by the residents of the village was as minimal as possible. I'm sure that dealing with 3,000-plus New York City firemen is not an easy thing to do. So I thank you for your patience and for your abilities in being able to handle that. I'd also like to take a moment to notice the Monroe Volunteer Ambulance Corps. In that same funeral, they were amazing. There were, it was very hot that day. These members of the fire department were clothed in very heavy uniforms and they dropped like flies. And the Monroe Volunteer Ambulance Corps was able to tend to their needs and they acted very quickly, and it was excellent. On much better news, we had an excellent day on Saturday. Our first-ever community barbecue was held on Saturday prior to the Mighty Spectrum Band Concert. What I was most excited about was that it only included volunteer organizations in and around Monroe. So the Mombasa Firehouse did an excellent job providing us with hamburgers and hot dogs and sausage peppers and, and corn. And Harper Smiles was there selling popcorn and cotton candy and marabou, the Methodist Church and Discovery Baptist Church. It was just a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful day.
I actually want to thank trustee who and your volunteers for putting that session down. I know a lot went into everything this summer. So, and it is very nice to see all the nonprofits being able to participate, so thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I as well, I'm very appreciative. I attended the funeral of that fireman on Friday, and I didn't see it, but I did see a picture and I'll assume, I'll just ask for a nod from Mr. Carl, was it our fire department that raised that flag? Yep, so I am very appreciative of that. It was an incredible day insofar as understanding that Monroe is an amazing community. Everybody stepped up, everybody took part in one way or another, including those whose patients were tested. There was a written comment- There was a written comment by Ms. Brown, who said she was glad to stop for a moment and reflect. I appreciate that as well, very much. It really makes me proud to be the mayor of the Village of Monroe, so I appreciate that. I appreciate trustee who for all her efforts as well. It takes a lot of work to do what, what everybody does, and I continue to say that what this village does, it puts out a product that I think we all can be very proud of throughout, especially our volunteers, ambulance fire. I too had a great day on Saturday. I actually suggested that the fire company participate on a regular basis. With the concerts, people really stepped up and came up, and they wanted everything, so they're thinking about it, I think. But overall, it was a really great weekend. The concert was well-attended, it was our best ever, and, and I want to thank the chief and his department as well for all their good works. On behalf of the Sullivan family that day, again, recognizing what we were dealing with was just immeasurable. I mean, I live on Ry Hill Road, and cars were parked on Ry Hill Road and walking to the funeral, so it was pretty amazing. So that's all I have, I think. Oh, yes, yes. So as trustee who mentioned, there was one organization called Harper Smile, Smiles, and through a tragedy of a loss of a child, they were able to come from out of that and develop this foundation that they're doing amazing work with, and they legislated a law up in Albany that the governor just recently signed, passed and signed into law, devoting manufacturers' obligation to the way furniture is placed in a home and how it's retained on a wall, because it is a little girl who had passed from that tragedy. So that was just amazing, too. Again, wonderful efforts on that family.
It's the first one in the country.
Yes, oh.
We are the first state in the country to legislate the requirement of top-heavy furniture to need to be mounted to the wall to prevent it from falling over again.
Yeah, amazing. Yes.
Yes, yep.
Absolutely, absolutely. So it makes you very proud and humble to know that you're part of this. Okay, I'm good. I'll allow anybody from the public that would like to speak, please do.
Hi, I...
Oh, I'm sorry, counsel?
No, I, I was asked by the mayor to put together any proposed amendments to the adaptive reuse local law.
Right.
Which I did. I sent a copy to the board today. I also sent a copy to the planner. I would like to hold off on formal introduction of that local law and scheduling of a public hearing until this board has had an opportunity to look at the proposed changes, which are fairly minor, but will clarify, I believe, what the intent of the, of the board was. So, just so that you have that, take a look at that, and perhaps if you're ready, we can prepare for introduction at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public, please? Please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Something very nice the other day. Maybe that's something that can become an annual...
I would love for that to become an annual thing.
We did, I know the Presbyterian Church did cancel their chicken barbecue, because they didn't want to conflict with the community barbecue, so they're, they're, they're a group that's aging out, and I just don't know how much longer they're going to be able to do their chicken barbecue, but probably one of the, one of the best around.
Best barbecues I've had.
But I mean, I, I, like I say, even if we have to adjust the schedule with them if they're doing theirs, but I think that's something that, I think we got the groundwork...
Or include them.
We got the groundwork started, maybe make that an annual, annual event. One-stage road, I know I brought it up to you.
Yep.
Regarding the parking signs that are placed out there.
So, yep, so I actually, I've already contacted our engineering firm. I'm going to have a full survey done on this entire property, going back to the sides, everything. I met with our building inspector, we walked the property, and in fact, we do own the property, or a good piece of it, let's put it that way. So I think to the benefit of everyone, we're going to have it surveyed, and we're going to entertain the owners into some sort of, I guess, a license agreement, maybe, we'll have to kind of vet that through, but there'll be definitely changes being made, because what's happened now is, I think, there's been an abuse of our property. I wasn't even aware, I mean, you did say to me, you know, I...
Well, I, when, during my administration, when Mr. Morshak owned that building, he had come to me several times, Robert Klein came to me, their big concern, not, they knew it wasn't their property, but handicap spots, so we designated the first two spots handicap spots, because a lot of elderly people went there to have their taxes done, or to see, you know, Mr. Morshak, Judge, you know, Judge Morshak.
Can I just ask a question? I don't mean to interrupt you. Do you know if that was memorialized in any kind of paperwork?
I...
Okay.
I, I go back and check the minutes from 2006 to 2010.
Yeah.
Because I know, I know it was done, it was done by the board, so...
I guess, because Jim and I were talking about it.
Yeah, no, I, I'm pretty sure we did, we did a resolution to make two handicap spots out there. When that happened, I don't know, but, but I even think, because I know I had, when, when Ben Oster was our attorney, he did some research, and I believe those dumpsters that are by the plum house are also on village property.
They are, that's a fact. Absolutely a fact. So we're going to be very, we're going to get the survey done first, and then we're going to be very aggressive in how we approach it.
Good, good. Next up, I was at the planning board meeting last night, trustee, I think it's there. They're moving forward with, with their approvals for the swimming pool.
Very exciting.
Has the village done anything more regarding bringing that extension out to 17M?
No.
The reason why I, I bring it up is if it's going to be paid for by others, meaning the Y, and it's built to village specifications, and try to schedule that so that when that traffic light eventually has to be put down there, that that all kind of comes together. But I think it's something that we really need to move forward with, for the sake of safety, and there was some statistics thrown around last night about the, the minimum amount of auto accidents and stuff in both areas, so we know there's going to have to be a traffic light eventually at Gilbert and 17M, and if somebody is willing to put that road in, I really think we should, we should be looking to, to do that and open that up. Any status with the, the water mains from the reservoir down to the filter plant?
Sure, so we're, we're in the process of reapplying for the weed grant again this year. As you know, we didn't get it last year, but we're reapplying, and our, our hope is to be able to make a more compelling case, you know, make it a little more direct, and just keep staying at it, you know, it's a, it's a 60% grant, and at 3.1 million, I think, it's, that's 1.8. So that's, that's the hope there. As far as development of plans, nothing is in concrete, but there is a recommendation for the type of pipe and what we have to do. That's what, that's what I have right now.
But wouldn't it be in your best bet to get the, get the plans drawn and get them to the health department to get approvals?
In advance?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
You really should, you should, really should look to, you know, lay out what you're going to do, and certainly submit the application with the plans at health department so that they at least come back with the comments, and then...
Right.
Get the approvals, that's great, so that once you get the funding, you're, you're, you're ahead of the game.
Yeah, what I could do is I could reach out to our engineering firm that we're using on this and put that to her, and see what she can recommend on that, sure.
All right. Last thing, on the water chestnuts up in the reservoir, have we come up with a...
Right now, we're going to cut them. As you remember from that last meeting, you can chemically treat it, you can get in there and pull them out at the roots, or you can cut it. I think right now what we're going to be committed to is cutting it chemically, I'm not into. That's my recommendation, you know, the board could opine themselves, but I'm really worried about quarantining a water source that is integral on a daily basis to our water supply.
Now, when you say cut it, are you going to, you're talking about using the...
Yeah.
The weed harvester, having, I think, power wash, sanitize before you take it up there?
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else in the public? Okay, I need a motion that we go into executive session for the purposes of personnel matters.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Thank you all for coming.